Lindbergh School's Board of Education Meeting Number 1542 is now called to order. Meetings are now open fully to in-person and also livestream, livestream that is, on the district's YouTube channel. And accordance with the CDC, we do recommend that fully vaccinated individuals continue to wear face coverings in the area, in addition to universal indoor masking for teachers, staff, students, and visitors regardless of vaccination status. Therefore, face coverings are required for individuals that are in attendance tonight. We do, we are missing one board member tonight, Kathy Karlock Lorenz. She is absent. She's in order to attend a school visit in Wisconsin, so that's why she's not here this evening. For her job, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, that was boring.
Not as a board member. Yeah. Thank you for that. 2.0, Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. And I would also, we're going to move to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to invite our two Dressel Elementary students who are here tonight, so Spencer and Oliver. If you would care to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And for all those who are able, we can stand. Start us out whenever you're ready.
Start when you're ready.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much for coming up and helping us out. So we'll move to 4.0, which is our actual special recognitions, and tonight we're recognizing Dressel Elementary, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Shonake.
All right. Good evening. I'm Pat Shonake, case principal Dressel. It's, I'm excited to be here tonight to represent or to honor some individuals that represent Dressel as a whole. And so first was our Teacher of the Year from last year, Coach Thompson. So come on up, Coach. So before I, before I start, he hates this, so just make sure you stare at him, make faces at him. What do you know, we need to do, because he's really enjoying this. So I was going to read one of the nominations that he received last year. Chris Thompson is more than deserving of this award. Chris Thompson is a role model for our students. When thinking about how to describe him in the words, the words humble, sincere, and forward-thinking come to mind. Chris is always doing things to support our students, staff, and school. He had to think outside the box to facilitate PE classes last year and has done a, and did a wonderful job. For years, he has led read, write, and run, which our students absolutely love. Chris also focuses on helping our community with the Share Card Program and Stream Team. He is teaching our students how to be compassionate and mindful of our community outside the wall, school walls. This is the perfect opportunity for Chris to know how lucky we are to have him at Dressel and how much we appreciate him. So Teacher of the Year Dressel, Chris Thompson.
Chris, congratulations. We have a certificate here for you and a gift certificate to our online store, $25 for you to get some spiritware. So congratulations, very well deserved.
Thank you.
All right, let's get a picture, let's move over this way a little bit. Kind of cattywalt.
Something cool is Chris's son actually attends Dressel too. He's a fifth grader, so, and then his wife and his daughter are here tonight to join us, so thank you. Okay. Next up is our Support Staff of the Year, Ms. Nurse Becky Hummel. Come on down. So most of you could probably have already written this for us for what the jobs our nurses did last year and are continuing to do this year, but I will go ahead and read another nomination from one of your colleagues. So Becky has an immense amount of responsibility and somehow seems to always get it done. Managing the wellbeing of Dressel students, dispensing student medications in a timely and correct manner, conducting vision and hearing tests, taking care of boo-boos, vomit, wet pants, contact tracing, and lots of tiers might not sound like a lot to handle, but take into consideration the amount of students, parents, and staff that making requests, and Becky has no choice but to be organized and accommodating. One thing Becky will never ask for is public recognition for her hard work, but that is exactly what she deserves. Without Becky doing her job to the highest standard she expects of herself, the negative impact across Dressel would be huge. So Becky Hummel, our Support Staff of the Year.
Congratulations. We also have a certificate and a gift certificate to the spirit store, so you can buy some spiritware. So congratulations, well deserved. Step over here, we'll get a picture. Yeah, hold that up, show that off.
Becky also has a first grader daughter that goes to Dressel, so. All right. So we're going to start with honoring our fourth grade student, Oliver Bittner. Come on down. So Oliver's teacher, Mrs. Norman, is also joined us tonight, and just add, just asked her to write a few words about Oliver. Oliver is an ambitious learner who's ready for anything. He's always perched on the edge of his seat with an insightful answer or a great question. As a learner, he approaches problems with an open mind and a list full, and a fistful of determination. Beyond the walls of our classroom, Oliver is consistently setting an example of what it means to have high-quality character. His ability to notice a need and to act in a manner to bring about positive outcome, despite the setting or who's involved, make him stand out. Being an effective communicator, an inspired innovator, and a solution seeker make him an outstanding example of quality character as a fourth grader. We're very proud to have Oliver Bittner as a fourth grade, our fourth grade outstanding student of character. Congratulations, bud.
Oliver, congratulations, buddy. Here's your certificate with your name on it, and then we also have a T-shirt for you as well. So congratulations, buddy. All right, let's get a picture. We're going to stand right here. Get a picture. Congratulations. Yeah, there you go. Hold that up. Good job. Congratulations, bud.
It's yours, okay.
We'll get them, we'll send them to you.
All right. Our fifth grade student is Spencer Mendoza. Come on down, Spencer. So Mr. Darren Wolf is his teacher, had to say Spencer comes to Dressel every day, ready to learn. Throughout the day, he always works hard, leads by example, and never needs to be asked to do the right thing. His character speaks volumes to his peers and the staff members at Dressel. The fifth grade team is thrilled to honor Spencer because of his work ethic and his outstanding character. Congratulations, bud. Well done.
Spencer, here's a certificate with your name on it. Congratulations, well deserved. And then we also have a T-shirt for you as well. So good job, congratulations. All right, let's get a picture, slide over this way just a little bit, right in front of that. Congratulations.
That's, one of the great parts of the meeting is recognizing efforts in the school and the students, and, you know, that's why we're here, to educate the kids, and thank you to the staff as well. And congratulations to everyone who was recognized tonight. Now, at this time, though, anyone who is here for the recognitions, unless you would like to stay for the business part of the meeting, and normally no one does, so we'll give you the time here, a few minutes, to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. So we'd also, at this time, like to acknowledge that this week is American Education Week. We officially approved that resolution last month's meeting, but we do have a short video we would like to play recognizing this week, so. Colin?
Like all teachers, I try really hard to not only teach my content, but to make those good connections with my students. I do, every Tuesday, I remind my students that I care about them and I'm there for them if they need anything, and that's been a good tradition that I've done over the past couple of years that really makes the students understand that I'm not here just as your teacher, but I'm also someone who cares about you. That helps just the students in terms of their mental health, but it also helps whenever we have to get into hard, tough content during class. We've got a good working relationship and everything just goes smoothly. I see my students first as human beings and as students, and then secondarily think of them as students of chemistry who I'm here to teach. So we're not going to accomplish much learning about chemistry if their mental health and all of those other things are not okay, so just making sure they know that me and all of their other teachers and everyone in the school is here to support them in those ways. So when I think back to my own journey as a student and some of the most impactful moments, they were things that were really simple, so just something that my teacher said to me in passing, like some encouragement, or, and that can happen from anybody, whether it's a counselor, bus driver, someone in the cafeteria. Just small moments and positive interactions with the students, I think, can make a big difference, make them feel comfortable and welcome in the school.
All right. We'll move to 5.0. Sorry. Resolutions, there are none, so we'll move now to 6.0, which is Citizen Comments Regarding Agenda Items. We do have a few folks signed up in regards to agenda items, and I'd like to remind everyone that you have three minutes to come up and speak. We do like to hear from anyone who would like to speak, but also reminding everyone just to be respectful and, you know, courteous of those folks who are coming up to speak, and let everyone have their word, because that's, that's what we want to hear from anyone who wants to speak. So we'll start with, I'll call your name, and when I call your name, please come forward.
Hi, how are you guys doing? Emily Hayes, my daughter is an eighth grader at Truman, and I am here to talk about the continuous masking, the disciplinary stuff, disciplinary stuff that is happening, and just kind of what, what our kids are going through on a daily basis. There was a great picture, I like, I like seeing this. Teachers at Crestwood, PE teachers all together in a group, no masks. Cross-country banquet, there was no mask. Volleyball banquet, no mask for the high school. I think it's great. Let's move towards that. But this is what these kids are enduring, besides getting yelled at by teachers on a daily basis, by administration on a daily basis. Nose up, cover your nose, your mask falling below your face, et cetera, et cetera. My daughter's mask was taped to her face. My daughter was threatened by her PE teacher to do an extra 30 push-ups because her mask was below. She was working out six feet away from other kids. And last, there was some technical issues at Truman last week, and there was problems with classrooms being, their wall boards being displayed in other classrooms, and it was brought to my attention that there was a nice G-chat between the teachers from September 28th about my child and her masking. So they all saw that. This is, this is ridiculous. Teachers need to teach. That is what they are there to do. They are not there to reprimand my child, any child. They are there to teach. Let it be the administration. I saw a thing about, you know, maybe we're going to move to mask optional, but it's going to be for the teachers, and as long as they can provide their vaccination status, they can, I guess, be mask optional. I have issues with that, that is segregation, if that falls down to the kids. That is a violation of their health histories. How are you going to distinguish who's vaccinated, who's not? Will they have a marking on their wrist? Will teachers have to yell at the masked kids, make sure that they're not yelling at the wrong kids, et cetera, et cetera? And it's definitely a violation of constitutional rights of our children. So that's really my issue, and I hope that when you guys do move to mask optional, you will not force a vaccine, which, I mean, right now is in the Fifth Congress, being argued that you can't force this stuff, so, thank you.
The next person on the list only appears to be a first name, Haley.
Hello, yes, my name is Haley, and I just wanted to come up here and speak on behalf of the children that can't speak for themselves. On October 2nd, Sam Page was at a gala in St. Louis County Maskless. I have photos here. Just five days after his most recent mask mandate, he announced on September 27th, and then a week later, he was at the Blues game, Maskless, which is the city of St. Louis, where they also have a mandate, and his most recent event that he was caught Maskless at was the Chesterfield Valley event this past weekend. Sorry, go tell somebody. The reason I'm pointing this out is because he's the one that y'all listen to, since he's part of the St. Louis Health Department and County Executive, and he's the reason these poor kids are being masked. And if you guys look at the dashboards, the city of St. Louis has zero deaths under the age of 30. For the county, the lowest number they show is 39 years of age, and under which is presumably because there have also been zero pediatric deaths in the county as well. Is the reason y'all are doing this is because of the funding St. Louis County Public Schools are receiving to keep these restrictions on these kids? That's literally less than the flu. This is absolute abuse and insanity? Now unmask these kids and let them breathe freely. Have y'all sat back and thought about the psychological effects this has on the kids, like taping masks to their faces? You guys talk about, you guys talk the big talk about mental health, but it's clear you truly do not care about their mental health. Now, I would like to know why the Lindbergh Public School are carrying books that are available for middle schoolers and high schoolers that is cartoon illustrated porn. Here I have it, I'm not going to walk it around, but I'll give it to the school board. If I'm not mistaken, anyone who provides porn to children can be criminally charged. And last but not least, people want to complain about parents who come to these school boards and speak out about the awful events unfolding and happening to these poor children. We are taxpayers, and these are our kids, and we have every right to be here, and everything that is happening is absolutely disgusting and shameful, and every single parent who has a child in public school should be concerned, because this is outrageous, all of it. And you guys truly do not know who y'all are up against. Have you guys ever tried to mess with a mama bear and her cub?
At last month's board meeting, I put the board on record for violations of Missouri statutes and board policy in regards to the use of living curriculums. Lindbergh School District is using curriculums that have not been formally reviewed and approved by the board in accordance with Missouri law. Also, the board did not adopt these curriculums one year prior to implementation in accordance with Board Policy IF. This is negligence by the board in overseeing the one district employee you were supposed to manage. The administration and the board have not cited one Missouri statute or board policy that, that supports the use of living curriculums, despite their widespread use in the district. Curriculum should include lessons and assessments to ensure that standards are met, content to ensure a necessary core foundational knowledge of our country is provided for the students of this district. The living curriculum I obtained for my son's class provided neither of these. Only one member of this board has shown concern that materials selected to support living curriculums are sexually explicit, biased, anti-American, or miss the mark on providing a proper foundational knowledge that meets the purpose of public education under the Missouri Constitution. That purpose is to disseminate the knowledge and wisdom to preserve the rights and liberties of the people. The board tonight needs to seriously consider their public duties and legal ramifications of proper oversight. Is it sufficient oversight to be presented and to vote on a curriculum that provides little to no content, no assessments, no indication that any lessons or activities will support state standards? Is it sufficient oversight to have a board-approved teacher evaluation process that only evaluates teachers on the implementation of curriculum standards and not curriculum content, lessons, and assessments? Is it sufficient oversight for a district that claims transparency to allow teachers to open up the content on canvas the day it is presented in class? Is it sufficient oversight when board members do not further inquire when parents show evidence of significant bias in the classroom? This is in direct conflict with board policy that requires objectivity to support critical thinking. Some parents ask questions about content in advance and obtain book lists and information on what would be taught. The content was very concerning for the parents, so the teachers said they would make an accommodation. This amounts to a separate but equal treatment of students that is wrong and could result in the ostracism of students whose parents object to certain books. Is it sufficient oversight for the board to simply accept the administration and teachers' accommodation for our students? Because the board represents the community, each board member should individually answer our questions and express their views publicly. There should be no further hiding behind this one board, one vote mentality. And since the MSBA continues, the MSBA trains and promotes that, the district should no longer affiliate with them. As such, I recommend the MSBA Contract Maintenance Agreement be set aside tonight to allow each board member an opportunity to break with the MSBA policy and present their views to the community. This contract should also be put on hold until we see some real discussion and conscience involved in your votes as our elected representatives.
All right. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. As you know, we don't publicly respond to the comments. Any response will come in writing, and we'll continue with this business portion of the meeting. So Communications, Calendar of Events, 7.01. Adam Secretary.
That's me.
That's you.
Okay, Calendar of Events, a very exciting week coming up for everyone, and that's the fall break, and that starts Wednesday, November 24th, 25th, and 26th, so there's no school. Our offices will be closed in the 25th and 26th. We have a Teaching and Learning Board Advisory Meeting on November 30th. Board Candidate Filing opens up at 8:00 a.m. on December 7th. December 8th, the board will hold a special meeting to conduct construction management at-risk interviews. There's a Technology Advisory Board on the 13th, and Finance Advisory on the 14th, and we will end the year on December 16th with our regular board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. 7.02 is Reports on Any Meetings. This is the time, and anyone who's attended meetings, I know we obviously had the MSBA, so anybody who wants to speak on that or any other meetings they've attended, now would be the time. Anybody want to start out?
I can start.
I can?
Um, we all attended the MSBA Conference, the State Conference, two weeks ago, and I thought it was really great. We learned a lot, went to many sessions that were really informative. We got to support our own there as well, and something that I really took away from the conference is that Lindbergh is doing really great things for our kids, and we have everyone here that's working really hard to maintain our excellence, and I'm just really proud of the work that we're doing, and we got a lot of feedback from that as well. And I also spent a lot of time, as a new board member, doing all of my new training, and so I am now certified. Woo! Yeah, I'll start with that.
The meetings that I attended was Women in Leadership, and it was very powerful. Matt and I attended that one, and the topic was the fact that there's not a lot of female superintendents. There's very, very few. And so I know, we as a district are going to work on talking to our students about becoming teachers, so we can kind of grow our own culture, and so I think this would be a great idea for us to even start to talk about, how do you move up into principalship or some type of administration or superintendent? So I really enjoyed that piece. And then also attended the Lindbergh Foundation Community Breakfast last Friday. It was well-attended, it was great to see everyone and just learn about the amount of money that we'll be giving back to our students for scholarships. Thank you.
I will say, you know, it, it also makes for a good event to sit down and discuss things with other districts, whether they be urban or rural, and everyone's, a lot of districts or most of them are dealing with some of the same larger things, but everyone has unique things they deal with in their own district. So it's nice to sit with your colleagues and just get an understanding of the things that they're dealing with and addressing, and how they're doing that, and getting different perspectives on how to approach things. So that's also a good part of that particular event, conference. Okay, so 7.03 now announcements, we do have one announcement in regards to the Board of Education Candidate Information Session. I don't know, do you want to do this, or do you want me to do the announcement?
Uh...
I don't even know if you have it, so I'm going to go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
That's all right. All right. So we are holding the information session following this meeting. We encourage anyone who's interested in running for a board seat to sit in on that, and you'll get information about filing dates, which that opens 8:00 a.m. on December 7th and closes 5:00 p.m. on December 28th. And there's a filing announcement, I think if you go to our website now, information's already there about the process and filing. The Ballot of Order of Candidates Who File on the First Day will be determined by a random drawing, but following that, it's just determined on, as you come in to file, then you become next in order, so that's an important part of the process. But if you want more information after this meeting, I encourage you to stick around for that session, because it'll be very informative. 7.04 is the upcoming Board of Education Agenda, so that's back to you.
They really didn't want me to talk all that time, so it was good you took that piece.
Yeah, well, you're welcome.
All right. So upcoming board meetings, again, as I said, December 8th for Construction Management at Risk, that'll be interviews that we're holding, and then on December 16th is our next regular Board of Education meeting. Our agenda would include financial reports, consent items, and three items for the record.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. We have no appointments, so we'll move to the Board Report from the MSBA.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of November. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the continuing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on Missouri's public schools. School districts throughout the state are implementing the protocols and policies designed to keep students, teachers, and staff safe and healthy while keeping students in school. The new Director of the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, Don Karoff, tells us one new option aimed at keeping students in school following an exposure to COVID-19 is called Test to Stay.
If they are close contact, can remain in school as long as they're constantly being tasked and they are consistently and correctly wearing masks. So it keeps kids in the school. Also, the, you know, a very important part of a student's education are the extracurricular activities, and the test to stay also allows them to participate in those activities. So, yeah, it's just another option for schools to keep kids in the classroom.
Karoff says it's also important to take precautions against the seasonal flu as the weather turns colder. He says we can't count on another mild flu season this year.
And our fear is, is that people say, well, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's just going to be another mild year, but we can't predict that now. And certainly as, as students and teachers, parents are starting to get more in... And certainly as students and teachers, parents are starting to get more indoors because it's starting to get a little cooler out, it's particularly worrisome. And now's really the time to get vaccinated. You know, it takes a few weeks for the, really to have full coverage from the influenza vaccine. We're getting close to Thanksgiving, so obviously now's the time that students, parents, teachers should get their annual influenza vaccine.
Updated school guidance for COVID-19 is posted on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website. School districts throughout the state are continuing to struggle with the shortage of teachers. A new effort to recruit and retain teachers sponsored by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is called Teach Missouri. Its goals are to elevate the teaching profession, improve the perception of being a teacher, attract the next generation of Missouri teachers, and develop a statewide recruitment system. Here's a public service announcement produced for Teach Missouri.
You'd make a great teacher. Teach has all you need to get started for free. On teach.org, you can search for state-approved teaching programs around the country and find in-person, online, and hybrid certification courses that fit you and your schedule. You can also find resources like stories from real teachers, information about financial aid options, teacher pay, certification how-to guides, and a personalized to-do checklist. If you have any questions, you can talk to our teacher coaches. Subscribe to get all these resources and more.
You can find out more about how to become a teacher in Missouri by visiting missouri.teach.org. It won't be long until the Missouri General Assembly convenes for its 2022 regular session in January. Education issues are likely to be the subject of considerable discussion, as is the case most years in the Missouri Legislature. The MSBA Board of Directors has approved legislative priorities for the session, including opposition to vouchers, tuition tax credits, or other programs that erode support for public schools, opposition to moving school board elections from April to November, and support for the expansion of and access to high-capacity broadband internet services throughout Missouri. Pre-filing of bills for the 2022 session will begin in early December. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your Board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, thank you, Colin. 8.0 is our special reports from the Cabinet, so we'll start with Joelle, Finance or Facilities?
Both committees met this month, and Facilities is just gearing up for the normal process every year where we have our buildings requests, capital projects, our facility improvements for next summer are the next year's budget. That process is started, and we'll meet again with the committee to go over the request list. We always have a list of items that carry over from prior years, so that will be evaluated as well. We talked a little bit about, always go over Prop R and what's happening at the high school, and then discussed some of our future projects in the next few years. Finance Committee met on Tuesday and had two big topics this month. We got our draft audit that they were able to review for June 30th of last fiscal year that was presented to the committee members and then staff. We stepped out while the committee had an opportunity to talk to the auditor without district leadership in the room, just to ask any questions they wanted. And then we also had in attendance our financial advisors from Piper Sanders and Gilmore Bell, our bond attorneys, were also there just to provide to our finance committee members more details surrounding the refinancings and bonds that we are issuing upcoming. We also have Todd and Hannah here tonight because that will be an item coming up later.
All right, thank you. Dr. McKinnon, HR?
Our group did not meet this month, but we will meet again in December.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Sparks, your trio of technology, student life, and teaching and learning?
So at our technology meeting, we focused on really reviewing the various apps that we have within the district. A lot of people probably don't know that we have about eight various apps that are used either for parent communications or resources throughout the school day, so things like eHallPass, Pick My Kid. We've obviously got Canvas, SIS, Flyers Nation. I know I'm missing a few of them. But our advisory members pre-selected which ones they'd want to learn more about and give feedback on, so we had group members rotate through three different sessions and learn about those various apps and then give input on how we can help to make them more user-friendly for families, teachers, and students. Our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, we reviewed updates to the curriculum cycle and started to look at proficiency scales for the elementary report card that is going to be coming soon for the 2223 school year. And then we concluded with our libraries are pursuing the Missouri Exemplary Libraries Program, and as part of that, they've spent the last year reviewing library policies and starting to make recommendations for changes that they think would be appropriate since many of these policies are over a decade old. And so they presented some of those changes, and then we're going to continue talking about other feedback that Teaching and Learning Board Advisory has regarding those policies. And then our Student Life Board Advisory spent time looking at social-emotional learning screeners. So we started the meeting talking about the purpose and the desired outcomes of what those screeners can provide in terms of supporting students. And then our original intent had been to look at two of the screener options, but we had such great conversations around one of them, looking at sample questions, what the platform was, that that will continue again at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. 9.0 is our Action Items by Consent, so we have items 9.01 to 9.11. Would anyone like to remove any of these items for individual consideration?
Yeah, I'm not, this isn't a request to remove an item, but it's just really for some brief review and discussion. I know that, I'm looking actually at our policies, which we are, you know, we're looking to approve after review, specifically Policy KKB. So Policy KKB deals with audio and visual recording. And I know there are people out there, I've always had a huge concern about privacy issues, particularly among our students, you know, in a school setting. And at times, I've had people, community residents, parents, sometimes ask about, well, you know, can recordings go on at school campuses? Can we film classrooms? You know, it poses some form of accountability in teaching. But we do have issues that we do serve minors, and I know that in revising this policy, it might be good just to clarify what our audiovisual recording policy is at the district. You know, so we're sensitive because, again, we have children in classrooms, minors. I know at one time, we used to have to provide authorization, parents did, before anything that's filmed on campuses here in the district could be released to the public. And I just wanted to, Beth, do you have a comment or for clarification?
We do still, we have a media permission that parents must sign, and every time either we take a camera into a classroom or we bring in a reporter, an outside person with a camera, our teachers are very familiar with the students on their list who do not have media permission at the secondary level. If they're not sure, we can quickly run a list, so we always identify that before we go into a classroom.
Right. Great, well, thank you. And I did this really just to pull out for discussion because I thought it was important to clarify on this because sometimes we hear this out in the community, there's some uncertainties about students, privacy being filmed and so forth. So thank you for that, Beth. I really appreciate it.
So you're not requesting removal, you just want some discussion. Okay, thank you. So we'll move to a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.11, and just note there are none for 9.08. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Megan, second by Mike. So any further questions, comments, or discussion before we move to a vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Now 10.0, Individual Action Items. I believe we have two, so the first one is a bond refinancing debt service fund. So that's a resolution authorizing the issuance of sale and delivery of bonds. So, Joelle, I'll let you take that over.
Yes, this is the second step in this issues process. Last month, you guys approved to go to market so that we could pretty much between last month's meeting and this month's meeting do all the paperwork and credit reporting and things like that to get ready to offer bonds for sale. This issue is refinancing debt, so it's not operating money, but it's in the debt service fund, and it's to the tune of about a $4 million savings in the debt service fund. So this resolution will allow us to go to the next step and offer up the bonds for sale on a tentative date of 11/30, which will be a competitive sale through parity.
All right. Any questions, or Joelle? All right, hearing none, so I'm going to read this correctly. Motion, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds of Lindbergh Schools providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest of the bonds as they become due and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. So do I have a motion?
So, second.
Motion by Kristi, second by Jen, all on the right side here. So any further discussion, questions regarding this? I cannot, no, I cannot. It was a struggle this once, so. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. 10.02 is the lease-purchase project and refunding resolution, so back to Joelle.
Get ready for another resolution here, so he's got to do another one. This is the first step in the process of another refinancing and an issue of some new funds, some additional funds to complete some projects at the high school, storm shelter, and some other, some other property access on the property. This is the go-to-market resolution, so similar to what you did last month, and there is a savings on this refinancing as well. Interest rates are very low right now, and this is on certificates of participation. So we will go, then the next month, you're going to have another one, so we've got, this takes a lot of time, at least a three-month period, to go through these refinancings. So another resolution for you to read.
Thank you for that. All right, well, let me read the motion here, and then we'll go to the questions and comments after that. So, motion to approve the resolution declaring the intent of Lindbergh Schools to enter into a lease-purchase transaction resulting in the issuance of certificates of participation for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of a project for the district and refunding outstanding lease obligations of the district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Matt?
Second.
Second by Megan. So now, any questions or comments that you might have? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Joelle.
Thank you, Board, and thanks for attending the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So 11.0, Reports. We do have three reports for the record for information only, so 11.01 is the Green Light Plan, and you can contact any of the Cabinet members if you have any questions about that for the record. 11.0102 is the First Semester Enrollment Report, so for that, I believe you want to contact Dr. McKinnon for any questions on that. 11.0103, the Community Education Evaluation, so for that, if you have any questions, you want to talk to Joelle if you have any questions regarding that particular report. 11.02, Other Reports. There are none. 11.03, Review of Board Policies, First Readings. So the first reading of Policy BDA will be brought to our next meeting seeking approval, but that's in there for the first reading, just the one policy, BDA. Now we'll move to 12.0, which is Citizen Comments Regarding Non-Agenda Items. So again, I will call your name and come forward and ask everyone again to be disrespectful and let everyone have their word, and you do, again, get three minutes to come up and speak for Citizen Comments, and we don't publicly respond to any public comments. But the first person on the list here is John O'Fallon Bell.
Thank you for letting me participate in this public comment. I'm asking if you are in receipt of the response that I wrote regarding the selective list of books that are in the Lindbergh Senior High School Library as a part of their curriculum? Am I satisfied that you're in receipt of that? I sent it out by way of email around 4:00, and I hope that in good faith, you'll address what is the content of my response. I developed what I would argue, what I would submit to you, is a comprehensive, unified, well-developed response that's based upon the values of truth, beauty, and goodness, and that really should be part and parcel to your decision-making. I have taken a deep dive into the books that are in question. I appeal to you, I urge you to take an equally deep dive into these books. I have broken them out as Group A, as books. These titles need to be referred to either a community, college, a college, or a university because the content is appropriate for adults, not for children. And Group B are rude and crude. They're poisonous. They need to be resent and mailed back to publishers. And in terms of respect, there's going to be parents, citizens, taxpayers, they're going to urge you and demand that you respect them and their children. I'm not going to ask you to do that. You need to bring self-respect to yourself because we all, whatever occupies our minds defines who we are, as well as what nourishes our hearts and our spirits. Our children don't have the experience and the memory to sufficiently recognize and process what are the glorious aspects of life, as well as the vulgar aspects of life. And these latter books just are atrocious, and have no part in a high school curriculum or in a library. So I'm calling for you within the next 30 days to remove these books for a culture that values multitasking. That is not out of the question. So take it from there because this issue is not going to go away. It's going to ripen, and you need to be mindful of that. And thank you very much for entertaining my remarks.
Next speaker on the list is Jennifer Vahr. Sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Hello, my name is Jenny, and I am a Lindbergh parent. And good evening, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am so grateful to you and all of Lindbergh for their efforts, especially during this pandemic time. The truth is, I went back and forth about coming to speak tonight. Reasons why I struggled with this choice is, first, I want to make sure that I'm here to share facts and not simply to speak out of emotion. True progress comes from collaboration, not conflict. Second, I realized that the topic I'm going to speak about tonight will require the entire education community across the country to make this change. But my goal tonight is But my goal tonight is if even one person truly hears and increases awareness about the topic, then that is enough for me tonight. The topic I'd like to speak with you about is literacy. To begin, though, I'm going to talk about a simple math problem, one in five. That's how many individuals suffer from dyslexia. In fact, it is the most common learning disability. Yet the current curriculum at Lindbergh, as well as many, many other schools throughout this country, simply does not provide the instruction that these children need. Science has shown that in order to teach children to read, the structured instruction is required, yet one in five are not getting that instruction. One in five. That means not, however amazing the teacher, and we have pretty amazing teachers at Lindbergh, one in five will simply be left behind. In the Lindbergh District, that's roughly 1,260 students. These students would need structured intervention or fall behind in all topics, including but not limited to literacy, writing, math, social studies, science, and the list goes on. Like many families, we tried very hard to fix this math problem for our child within the Lindbergh District. Unfortunately, the solution to us was clear, systematic structured curriculum was the only way. So simply put, our child was not going to obtain what she needed with the current curriculum in place at Lindbergh, so we made the very difficult choice to send her to a school that was able to meet her needs. And we feel very lucky to have the means to do so. Not all families have that choice. Therefore, in closing, board members, I leave you with this. Lindbergh leads the way in so many areas, so let's lead the way in literacy instruction. I'd like us to pause for five seconds now to honor those who so desperately need it. Thank you.
Or Deanna, I'm sorry if I pronounced sorry.
Thank you for having me. I'm just going to go right at it. Lindbergh's U.S. history curriculum is being taught through a lens that closely aligns with critical race theory ideology, which asserts that our nation's history can only be properly viewed through the lens of racism and white supremacy. CRT is not my focus this evening, but I would think it relevant to share something our son said just last week. He and I were discussing a homework assignment about reconstruction and how he might answer a question when he threw up his hands in frustration and concern and exclaimed, "I don't want to sound racist." Our son is in no way a racist, so why on earth is sounding racist something he has to worry about in addition to the academic challenges he faces in just trying to complete his homework? This is infuriating. But Lindbergh's U.S. history class expands the CRT lens to include sexism, homophobia, xenophobia, and anything else that separates Americans into opposing groups or us versus them. The underlying message is that the United States, its constitution, its capitalist structure, and all of its interlocking economic, political, educational, and just judicial systems are built on and perpetuate a society of the haves and have-nots, the powerful and the powerless, the oppressor and the oppressed, and therefore America is fundamentally bad. This is not what we want our son to be taught about our country, and it's not what we thought he would be taught in this class, but we were wrong. As I stated in the last meeting, I've spent countless hours looking at a very accessible slide, video, pair doc, Google doc, and related assignments and resources for this class, starting with the first day of school until present, in order to confirm these concerns and gather supporting evidence, all of which I'm more than happy to share. Based on my research, every unit of the class so far this year has been presented primarily through the oppressor-pressed lens, continually asking students to take sides on people and issues based solely on a limited and often heavily biased information provided within the curriculum, a practice that discourages thorough and objective research and analysis and promotes very binary and divisive thinking. Additionally, students are almost never instructed to consider historical context, which is paramount to true critical thinking. When we view historical figures and events absent from their historical context, our evaluations and judgments of those people and events become naturally distorted by our own current context, and we don't learn anything meaningful or applicable. It might be more engaging, but it's definitely not educational. And what's worse, this curriculum uses the oppressor-pressed lens to present and evaluate historical figures and events absent from their historical context and then assert that they can be directly causally correlated to current social justice issues, which is extremely controversial and totally inappropriate for the class. While class content is generally factually accurate, there are opinion and judgment statements woven throughout the curriculum that further advance a narrative that looks an awful lot like anti-American indoctrination, and that is not the constitutionally designated purpose of or right of public education. All right, thank you.
Next individual, John Struckoff.
My name is John Struckoff. I'm 69 years old and a resident of the Lindbergh School District. I have many old neighborhood friends that graduated Lindbergh High School classes '70. My wife of 49 years graduated Lindbergh in 1972. I value the high school education enabling the age group that I'm part of to prosper in the workforce. We're all retired now and old. We learned cursive writing, mathematics, critical thinking, and accountability and learning. Yes, we all worried about our SAT scores and not how we felt about each other in warm and fuzzy. Why am I here tonight? Because my grandchildren are enrolled in grade middle schools. I have a lot of time to watch what's going on in the country. It deeply concerns me. I'm aware of the toxic goals of critical race theory and have come to understand that the rebranding of social economic learning is just that, a rebranding of it. I believe this is the coward's way of hiding the toxic CRT. Rename it, and the parents will not notice. Lucky for you, my daughter has brought to my attention the books available to the students. As a service to you, I have briefly reviewed these books and have not found any value that can equate to workforce or societal contribution, just in attempt to normalize a bunch of social, emotional, sexual behavior garbage. So here's my old man perceptions, thoughts, and opinions. The purpose of these books and someone's goal. One, circumvent parental responsibility, dishonor their authority, their personal choice, and religious values. Two, cast dispersions on the family unit, family and community values. Three, promote a dysfunctional, divided society. Then I thought, let's follow the money. Who originally promoted these books? What was their agenda? Two, who authorized these books? Did they read them first? Three, were they purchased or donated by an entity promoting an agenda? My daughters told me the committee will review the books. One, are they still on the shelf? Two, who's providing the review and based on what standards? Lindbergh guidelines, published standards? We'll learn about that next speaker. Is this, three, is this review, the fox in the hen house, selected to justify an agenda? Can, four, can the committee redefine obscene and pornography to justify their intent, like CRT is renamed SEL? So it's really all about parental awareness. Therefore, my daughter will read aloud from the books to enlighten the parents of the district, but first a warning. We have provided the book abstracts, I'll drop them off for you ahead of time. If you interrupt your reading, we will view this as an admission and confirmation of the inappropriate nature. We are to conclude it's good enough for our children, per the committee, but offensive to this board. Does this make any sense? This acknowledgement of the board that your social moral standards are infringed should logically result in the removal of these books from the school library. In conclusion, it's my opinion, in conclusion, it's my opinion that the efforts to change and reshape our children's to promote your agenda is not welcome. Parents want the best education based on truth and facts, not propaganda. If you're not willing, if you're not working for the best interests of the children and their parents, you must resign. I pray for school choice that will allow parents to decide where their children are educated because of money, problems, and students. Keep it up, and this could be bad for the district. Re-market education. Thank you, and have a blessed Thanksgiving.
I just want to remind everybody that this is, we enjoy and appreciate people coming up and making comments, but we're asking everyone to be polite and respectful and not yell out or call out. So we'll go on to our final speaker, Kristen Gardner. We'd like to continue allowing people to come and comment.
The policy IG BDA, Distribution of Non-Curricular Student Publications, which was adopted in 2001 and updated in 2004, it says, "The Lindbergh School Board of Education has the ultimate responsibility." It states, "Guidelines cannot distribute expressions which are obscene to minors, advertise a product or service not permitted to minors by law." And the definitions under A, it says, "Sexual conduct such as intimate sexual acts, normal or perverted, masturbation, extortory functions, and lewd exhibitions of the genitals." Minors means any person under the age of 18. So I'm going to read some stuff, and I embarrass, this is embarrassing and saddens me to read this out loud. "I want parents to fully understand the type of information made available to the students by the district." The first one is Hands May Tail. This book is in the 10th grade ELA Honors Teacher Chosen. The committee voted to keep the book on the list. A parental appeal filed and pending board approval. We expect the board to vote on the appeal as a standalone item next month and not part of a consent item. So the summary of the book states, "Graphic art of rape and abuse of women by men. Stereotypes are promoted, ceremonial sex, rape," and it has caricature drawings in it. So here's a part of it. "My red skirt is hitched up to my waist, though no higher. Below it is the commander is fucking. What he is fucking the lower part of my body. I do not say making love because that is not what he is doing. Serena Joy grips my hands as if she, not I, that's being fucked, as if she finds it either pleasurable or painful, and the commander fucks with a regular two-four marching stroke on and on like a tap dripping. I untangled myself from her body. Stand up, the juice of the commander runs down my legs." That's part of that book. Now here's another one that's in the library. Let's see, it's, this book is gay, and there's a section doing the sex. "Two men can pleasure each other in a variety of fun ways. One, handsies. Perhaps the most important skill you will master as a gay or bi man is the timeless classic, the handjob. The good news is, you can practice on yourself. And the bad news is, each guy has become very used to his own way of getting himself off. Learning how to find a partner's personal style can take ages, but it can be very rewarding when you do. Blowies. Oral sex is popping another dude's peen in your mouth, or indeed popping yours and his. There is only one hard and fast rule when it comes to blowjobs, wash the teeth."
Thank you for the comments. We'll move on to 13.0. It's recessed, we've already conducted our executive session, so there's no need to move to this. So 15.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting Number 1542?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Megan, second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Board Meeting 1542 is adjourned. You've got to sign this.